I call to order the September meeting of the Lafayette County Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, in reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk conduct a roll call vote? Linger?
Here.
Snyder?
Present.
Reynolds?
Present.
Wees?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Allersmeyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
For the President. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our August meeting. Mr. Linger?
I move we accept the minutes as communicated.
Second?
Second. Are there any questions or concerns or corrections for this? Seeing none, will the clerk? Oh, we'll just do a roll call. All in unanimous, yeah.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, got that done. Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Fleet Maintenance, monthly July, Renew Department, monthly July, Waterworks Department, monthly July, Police Department, and a report 2024.
Okay, and these are on the city's website, or you can come to the clerk's office and get copies of them. Okay, ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 2025-30. Do you want to read the public comment? Well, should we do this first?
Sure.
Okay.
And ordinance mini chapter 10, animals, chickens.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
I moved to hear and vote on 2025-31.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to read a couple things about public comment, because I think we'll have quite a few tonight. Public comment is not an opportunity for you to personally attack other attendees, council members, or city officials. Again, all participants are required to maintain a high level of civility, respect, and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant who upon their third warning persists in a discourteous or hostile manner, which may dispute the meet, disrupt the meeting, will be asked to leave. Any form of physical or verbal threats, intimidation, or violence will be a result in immediate removal. Another thing, when you come to comment, if your concern has already been expressed, you don't need to come up and repeat it over and over. You could just say, "I agree with this comment," okay? Or concern, and I would, you know, vote yes or no. Or if you have new concerns that haven't already been expressed, then of course we'd like to hear those concerns too. Okay? All right.
Do we go over the details real quick? Madam President, have the ordinance? All right. Okay, just so everyone in the room, a quick refresher on what this ordinance does. This is an ordinance to allow chickens within the city of Lafayette. Key components is up to five hens, no roosters are allowed. Chickens must be housed in a coop and pen with size based on number of hens. Coops and pens must be located at least 10 feet from neighboring property lines. Flocks must be maintained in a way that does not create a public nuisance. The ordinance does not supersede or any prohibition by homeowner associations or private landlords. A free permit is required in order for us to track where flocks are being maintained. The chickens must have some form of identification, such as a leg band. And then there is a one-year sunset provision added in this ordinance, so that we will come back and discuss it again in a year if it is passed on second reading tonight. So those are the highlights.
One other thing about the comments, you're limited to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address. Okay, we have public comment.
My name's Gary Noling. I live at 914 South 9th Street. I want to thank you all for giving us time today. I've had a four-decade-plus career with the United States Department of Agriculture. Fifteen years of that were spent with the livestock behavior unit. I was a lab manager for the biosafety Level 2 lab, which is working with pathogenic infectious organisms that pose a moderate health hazard if inhaled, ingested, or come into contact with the skin. The livestock species that we worked with in our lab, of those particularly poultry, were by far the most potential to carry and transmit a variety of zoonotic diseases such as E. coli, Salmonella, Campybacker, the list goes on. When analyzing samples collected from our in-trial chickens, they routinely exhibited the presence of Salmonella and E. coli in their tissues and fecal samples. The vectors for the transmission of these pathogens include touching, handling, inhalation, flies, and rodents. Chickens also produce a phenomenal amount of waste. We found that out working with them in the research labs. We would use stainless steel pans every day, those had to be changed out. They have to be disposed of sanitarily and correctly. Domesticated livestock requires a much higher degree of husbandry than domesticated pets, particularly when they're restricted to these small land plots that we're talking about. The CDC website, Healthy Pets and Healthy People, which was updated on July 18th of 2025, quotes that owners should be aware that poultry can sometimes carry harmful germs and make people sick. These germs can cause illness in people ranging from minor skin infections to serious illnesses that can cause death. Also, the CDC website, Salmonella Infection, which was updated in August 21st, 2025, states that public health officials are investigating multi-state outbreaks of Salmonella illnesses linked to the contact with backyard poultry. Any backyard poultry can carry Salmonella germs and can make you sick. Along with this website, just of the reported cases, they were saying that this is, this ongoing investigation, this is 47 states, there's been 429 cases, 39 hospitalizations, and two deaths. Along with the chances of transmitting an illness is predators. The Ohio State University Extension website, Predators and Poultry, states that predation is the biggest concern for backyard flocks. Flocks are at the highest risk, especially during nighttime, if they are not provided with provider, with, excuse me, predator-proof housing. Predators include coyotes, foxes, bobcats, weasels, birds of prey, raccoons, opossums, skunks, rodents, and snakes. Again, the list goes on. Neighbors of these, of owners that are maintaining these poultry need, if they, if they have pet cats, or they have toy or miniature canine breeds, they're going to have to be extra vigilant to protect those pets from predation. I know this personally, because my, my brother and sister-in-law, who live in Florida, had a flock of birds for a while. It brought in all the above mentioned, well, not all, but a variety of the above-mentioned predators, and actually, my sister's neighbor had two Chihuahuas, which they lost to, to a coyote. And just a final, just a final thing, in Florida, of course, we're not going to have to worry about that here, but in Florida, my sister's flock actually, the reason that they decided to get rid of them was because they were bringing in cougar and black panthers, which then became a predator to humans. So thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
More public comment?
Linda Moore, 624 Cherokee Avenue, Lafayette. I respectfully ask the council to vote no to the chickens within the city. As someone who grew up on a farm that raised a variety of livestock, including chickens, I have a few facts that I'd like you to consider. The first is chicken waste. According to Purdue Extension, an individual laying hen will produce approximately 70 to 130 pounds of fresh chicken manure each year. Times five, up to 650 pounds a year, and that doesn't include bedding or feathers. That's fresh manure. I think that will incur a large expense for the city to remove that. They also have to be very considerate in how they remove it, because it can contain pathogens of Salmonella, histoplasmosis, a lot of things that could infect the person handling the waste. If you use it in your yard, you're supposed to compost it first before you add it to your soil, because those pathogens can get in the soil and then in our water. So I would, would ask you to please consider those things very carefully. And another point I'd like to make, I also agree with the chickens transmitting diseases. I looked up the website and the CDC, and I totally agree with what he stated formerly about that, and also about bringing the predators. But one other thing I would like to talk about is noise. And I looked this information up, and it can, it comes from a sanctuaries and rescues that field calls about unwanted chickens. And what they have indicated is that 20 to 50% of chicks end up being roosters, that are sold as hen chicks, end up being roosters. And that's because you can't sex a chicken until it's two to several months old. So when you buy a baby chick at two to five days old, you don't really know what you're getting. And so therefore, I think we'll have noise, not just from chickens, but also from roosters. And somebody has to take care of those then when they come, 20 to approximately 50%. And then I also agree with the predators, and I think that that's a real concern within our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, one, I want to end with one thing, just a statement. And the real risk to human, there's real risk to human health when it comes to urban chickens, but no increased risk from maintaining the current ban on chickens in the city of Lafayette. Thank you for your time.
You guys have already said you've got a year to think about this. You know, this is the United States of America.
Say your name and address, please.
Pearl Speakman, 923 South 22nd Street, Lafayette, Indiana. This is America. You're already setting a safeguard, and if you do your job, then there's problems, then you can come back in a year and say, "No," and you'll have facts. You'll have facts. Some of this stuff's written in books. I ain't saying it's lies, but I can say what. It's probably exaggerated. And talk about predators, anybody who wants any coons or opossums or groundhogs, let me know, I'll catch you one. My backyard's full of them. They just ate five of my watermelons. So, you talk about predators, I got them, but I think the people in Lafayette deserve the right for a year's probation period, and see if they can follow the rules. If they can't follow the rules, don't do like to do some of the rules now. Don't wishy-washy. Bite them, and bite them hard, because if you don't, you're going to have the same thing you got on a lot of ordinances right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Steve Fields, 819-18, 819 Central Avenue. I won't repeat some of the scientific data, because it stands on its own, but I'd like to talk about more of a practical matter. Imagine going outside your house on a beautiful night like tonight, and just 10 feet over your property line, chicken coop. We've talked about data of handling waste, but we haven't talked about odor drifting over through the air into your yard, into your sensory. They do smell, we've been around chickens, fed livestock. And they will attract coyotes, fox. Coyote and fox can dig under fences, they can attack our pets, cats and dogs, as been repeated, for a variety of reasons, they're just not practical in the city. I understand why it'd be nice to have chickens outside your back door, eggs, but they just don't belong in the city, they are farm animals. Please vote no against the ordinance at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
More comments?
Hi, Hillary Battei, 1516 Kason Street. Sorry, I did not come prepared to speak tonight at all. Brought six kids and some cousins who really want chickens. So interestingly enough, this is kind of anecdotal, but I've been working with my sixth and seventh grader on logic, and we're, we're learning about some fallacies, and one of the fallacies that we were discussing this week is appeal to fear. And it is a logical fallacy, so it is very easy to appeal to fear, right? If we do this, all these other things might happen, disease, big scientific names, animals, everything is just going to be so bad. So I would like to remind everyone on the board that urban chickens is not a new idea. It's been tested in several cities, and it's working. It's not causing these problems. We're not hearing about these cities, you know, "Oh, my goodness, Salmonella outbreaks, there's foxes all over." It's working, okay? Somerville, Massachusetts, they passed an urban agriculture ordinance, including chickens, permitting them with guidance. It's a long-running program. It's designed to minimize nuisance and health risks. Fort Collins, Colorado, allows hens with permits and inspections and coop requirements. There's a municipal page that documents their program at the city of Fort Collins website. Madison, Wisconsin, huge city, they legalized urban chickens in 2004. An active community, which is called Mad City Chickens, reports no citywide public health incident linked to household hens. South Bend, Indiana, passed a small flock ordinance in 2013. Local reporting, again, doesn't report any health issues, okay, with, with small flocks that are clipped clean. So listening to some of the people here, I think we're all like, "Oh, we're going to pass this ordinance, and everyone in the city of Lafayette is going to get 50 hens and let them poop all over," and, you know, it's, let's, let's be reasonable. And I think that with the proper laws in place, chickens, if we're going by odor and noise, then dogs should not be allowed in the city of Lafayette. Okay? Dogs are much louder than chickens, they're stinkier. If you have a reasonable coop, three, four hens, I can guarantee you, the neighbors are not going to notice those hens plucking around. They make very little noise. I mean, we're talking maybe families, like mine, six kids, like maybe two or three chickens, right? I want my kids to go and get some eggs. I want to be able to not go to the grocery store and have it really hurt my wallet, you know? I want to be able to have that sustainability. This is an amazing thing for a community to have. And I'm proposing to you that a vote of yes for chickens is making everybody happy. Why? Because if you want to have chickens and you obey the reasonable laws that the city of Lafayette proposes, you can have those chickens and offer a wonderful thing to your community, your family, your bill, right? This is like so many advantages. If you don't want chickens as your neighbors, you don't have to, because they can come and complain, right? Someone says, "Oh, these chickens are too loud," or "There's too many," or "They're stink."
You need to wrap up.
Then, I'm sorry, so these people can complain, you know? It's not, it's not because you vote yes that everyone has to have chickens in their backyard. So I think this is, anyway, those are my closing. There are other cities where, again, I just want to remind you, this is not the first city where this has worked. It's worked, and everyone's been happy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Other comments?
Lisa Schrader, 728 Cherokee Avenue. I lived next to a chicken coop on Cherokee Avenue. I've lived there 25 years. For about a year, my next-door neighbors had a chicken coop, and it was problematic. I would pull, I didn't realize this current ordinance only has a 10-foot setback. Theirs was farther than 10 feet, but I would pull in my driveway, and there are chickens running around on my driveway. I would have to get out of my car, shoo the chickens back over the fence. On a hot day, you would notice the smell from the yard. The noise wasn't as bad, because theirs was farther than 10 feet away from my property. But if it was 10 feet or less, I mean, it would be, I mean, I think it would be a noisy, it, the lots in Lafayette are too small for chicken coops. My neighbors ended up moving out to the country, but prior to their move, it wasn't a pleasant, it ruined our friendship, this chicken coop. And that's another thing people need to think about, the socialization of it. Neighbors are going to be battling each other over these chickens. It's, it's going to cause another whole layer of negativity in our city. And I, I think you ought to vote no. I don't think it's appropriate for Lafayette.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Stephen Leach, 432 Southern Drive. I just want to start by saying I have no intention of having hens in my backyard if this ordinance passes, just not my thing, but I certainly would take advantage of eggs, fresh eggs, if they, if they came my way. But I think this is one of the best-written city ordinances that is being proposed. I think it's one of the most restrictive ordinances that is, is out there, and I just, as an academic, had to dive into this a little bit. And I think one of the, the most restrictive parts of it is the distance from the lot line, as well as the feet requirement from another home. In addition to that, the fact that the coop has to be behind the house. So I spent entirely too much time analyzing the city's parcel data, and with my estimates, and I'm going to, willing to, if anybody wants to challenge this, I'm happy to share my data, but if you look at, if you look at all those restrictions, given the, the distance from the lot line, the, the distance from a home, and the fact it has to be behind the house, if you do the analysis, my estimate is between 14 to 21% of homes in Lafayette are actually physically large enough to have the chick, or the hens, not chickens, hens in this case. And that doesn't factor in HOA nor rental properties. So if you do that, again, spent far too long trying to analyze where the HOA homes were plus rentals, you're down to about 7 to 13% of homes in Lafayette would realistically be allowed to keep hens under, again, this restriction. So if you put that in context, nearly nine out of 10 households in the city would still not qualify, even if they wanted to, to this, to this ordinance. I know Highland Park's been brought up, and I think it's a wonderful area, I have many friends that live there, but again, if you look at the parcel data there, the average home there is between .15 and .20 acres, again, with the fact it has to be in the backyard, then that means that there's only a handful of homes would legally be allowed to in Highland Park, so maybe 10 to 20% could actually even consider it. So I just think, again, I have no intention of having hens, but I wouldn't want to stop people who would legally and, not just legally, but also fairly and responsibly look after these, these animals, and I think this is a very, very important fact, that this is not a free-for-all. This is a very restrictive ordinance that I think can be very well controlled, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan McBurnett, 802 North 9th Street, Unit 31. As I said last council meeting where this was discussed, I live in an apartment building. I will not have chickens. But I grew up with chickens my entire life. Both my mom and my dad live on separate farms, they've had chickens my entire life. Of course, predators are an issue. Predators are an issue for any animal, the size of a breadbox or smaller. It's not, it's not just chickens that have issues with predators. There's always going to be risk associated to introducing a new kind of animal into an ecosystem where it hasn't been previously, in this case, the city of Lafayette, right? I agree with some of the previous comments said, we shouldn't make our decisions based on fear. There's a lot of fear coming up, there's a lot of logical fallacies, slippery slope arguments, all that sort of thing. And chickens are not loud, especially five hens, certainly not loud. Chickens are dirty if you allow them to be dirty, but five hens, again, are not going to be dirty. And as, as Kevin said last meeting, there's been an overwhelming amount of support for this ordinance over the past few months. There's been a lot of people organizing around this that have put a lot of energy into this. It would be a real shame to see city council shoot it down after so much energy has gone into it. And, you know, people, people need eggs, people love, need to learn how to take care of animals. I think it's something that is relatively harmless compared to other things, and I think that you should strongly consider voting yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Patrick Poquette. I live on 2301 Bennett Road. For the past nine months, I've noticed how hard my mom has been working on making hens legal. She's put in countless hours, and that made me realize how much hens mean for our family, and more. When I was younger and we had hens, I remember going outside and watching them. I'd really admire how amazing they are, and how cool it was to collect eggs with my family. Please consider this in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Krista Fisher. I live at 905 Rainbow Court in Jessica Hills. Just a couple things, dogs bite, we allow them, as everyone has kind of said, cats carry and spread disease as well through their feces, but we still allow them. Obviously, there's a cost, and we let homeowners make that decision for themselves. I really appreciate him bringing up the lot, the size of the lots, especially in Highland Park, because I feel like that's been brought up multiple times, and it's, you know, it's something we've definitely thought about. It's just like anything, there might be a few irresponsible chicken owners, just like there's irresponsible pet owners of any sort. If you live next door to one of those irresponsible chicken owners, talk to them like a grown-up and then report them to the city. And again, there might be an influx of chickens to start, but as Animal Control said at the last meeting, you know, after a while, you know, they'll realize the work that is put in, and they won't want to deal with it anymore, and then, you know, they'll quit being chicken owner, chicken owners. So that leaves us responsible chicken owners, the people that are here tonight. We're passionate, caring individuals that want this experience, but don't live in the county. My sons and I have researched countlessly this summer and discussed our future, and we deserve a chance to try, so thanks.
Thank you. Say your name and address.
My name's Francesca Speerink. I live at 658 Param Avenue, Lafayette, Indiana. And I really like chickens, because I like getting to have the responsibility. I like getting to pick eggs, and there's also less chick, I mean, ticks. And I also do get a compost, and I think we get a lot more time outside, because I bet our brother, me and my brothers and sisters would all like, you know, playing with the chickens. And also, yeah, I think it would be fun.
Where have you gotten that experience?
My cousins have chickens, and I liked, every day I would pick their eggs, and I think it would be really fun.
We also had experience with chickens when we visited friends in Wichita, Kansas, so that's another large city that has, as was mentioned earlier, and plan for urban chickens. And it's, they were, you know, small lots, but the neighbors all kind of participated by taking food scraps over, and then the kids could go collect eggs. It didn't smell, it wasn't loud, so we've gotten to kind of, you know, briefly live in that experience of having that in another city.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment.
And would you like to say you would also like chickens? Just say it, you have to say it. Okay, you got to be fast. Okay, say it.
My name's Justin Speerink, and I live in Indiana.
Would you like chickens? And you want chickens? Okay.
I'm Gemma Wilson.
Can you turn the mic down a little bit, so I can, we can hear you better?
And use your outside voice.
Yeah. You can talk really loud.
I live in 51.
1521.
1521 Kason Street. And my grandma and grandpa, we go and visit them, and they have chickens. And I really like going in the backyard and picking the eggs, like, every morning when we visit. Also, when chickens get old, sometimes they lay different colored eggs, and I think it would be really fun for people to, for my brothers and sisters to go outside and like, say like, "Oh, look, this old chicken laid a blue egg," or something.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything, Finn? Bridget, do you want to say anything?
My name is Finn Wilson, and I live on 1521 Kason Street. We have the ability to choose, and that we can choose chickens over no chickens is a gift. And so, it would be so much fun to have chickens in a backyard. They are birds, they are not lions, they are not tigers. They're the size of a vulture that flies above your house. They don't try to kill people. They stay subdued, and they do not make messes only when they have free range. Thank you for your time.
You for your comment. Bridget, do you want to say anything?
I know.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to say too, it's, it's so important for kids to know a little bit of connection to where their food comes from, and the more segregated our cities and counties have been from each other over time, kids are losing that connection. It's harder and harder for them to, to make the connection of where their food is actually coming from, and this is just one simple step to know that, you know, "Oh, look, an animal..." And this is just one simple step to know that, you know, oh, look, an animal can produce a good for you. This is meat comes from something, or the egg comes from something, and this is just the one little thing that you can say, like, oh, that, this is a doorway, a gateway, for them to understand everything else they see in the grocery store.
I can't.
Okay, hurry up.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Wilson, and I live on...
You can just say what you want. Yeah, we know where you live, we got it. Say, yay chickens.
Yay chickens.
Okay, yay chickens.
I like chickens.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Carol Sandy, 730 Cherokee Avenue, Lafayette. I am very much opposed to this ordinance. 20 years ago, when it was first or so, I can't even remember, I fought vigorously to defeat that ordinance, and I am still opposed to that ordinance for a variety of reasons, all the reasons that you've all heard. I will tell you that I do have family members that are, in fact, farmers, both large and small. They shake their heads at the concept of chickens in your backyard. My biggest concern right now, and the reason I stepped forward is the young, excuse me, and I agree with the comments that Gary Knowings made, and some of the other comments about public health that we are concerned about. But I would ask for clarification on a part of the ordinance that talks about setbacks and locations of the chicken coops. I think that it is not clear. The comment from the gentleman previously that did all the data research, and that there's a very small percentage of properties within the city limits that could, in fact, meet the setback requirements of the ordinance, and I think that it is unclear. Initially, when I read it, I thought, oh, well, there aren't too many lots that can support it. But the way that it is written, it appears as though, and I asked for clarification, it appears as though the, for the majority of the properties, we're looking at just a 10-foot setback from our property line. Because the 20-foot setback from, as I read it, that says, "from a structure," unless the harbinger resides in that structure, which means any homeowner that lives, to me, as I read it, a homeowner that chooses to have a backyard chicken coop can, in fact, place it anywhere in their backyard, providing it is 10 feet from the property line. And so, I take a look at, yes, I do live in Highland Park. Virtually every property in Highland Park would be allowed, by that definition, to have a chicken coop. And so would the fair majority of the properties within the city limits of Lafayette. So I just asked for clarification on that, because I think that it is unclear, and I think that it is unfair to say only 7% to 10% of properties within the city limits of Lafayette would meet those setback requirements. So I asked for clarification on that. Thank you. And I, 20 years ago, said, please vote no, and today, I still say, please vote no. Thank you.
Can you clarify?
Yeah, I can clarify that. So there are two different requirements written into the ordinance. One is that the coop and pen must be 10 feet from the property line of any adjoining lot. So that is just issue one, like, you cannot be any closer than 10 feet of an adjoining property line. The language about being away from the home is also to make clear, you have to be 10 feet away from the property, but you also have to make sure you're at least 20 feet away from a house, unless it's your own house, basically, is what that's written to be. So if you own chickens and want your coop to be closer than 20 feet to your house, that's okay, but you cannot have your coop where it is now going to be within 20 feet of your neighbor's house. So hopefully that clarified it for everyone.
And 10 feet from every line.
10 feet from every lot line. Mm-hmm. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Audrey Story. I live at 628 Perrin Avenue. I am a homeowner. My lot would not allow for chickens, and I won't try to be as eloquent as people have in the past, but I would like you, I would like to have the opportunity to have chickens in the future. So I would ask you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. More comments?
Hi, my name is Adi Porter. This is Della Porter and Amava Porter. We live at 4141 Trees Drive. So we live in the county, and we have 15 chickens. We have had them for almost two years, 18 months, and we love them. Our neighbors love them. They get eggs. We are not, they, my five kids are lots noisier than them. There are studies that say that kids around livestock and chickens are actually healthier than without, so sorry, we're crying. But we love our chickens. I love the education. I love the joy. It just brings so much joy to our life, to our family. And my kids love them and hope to take care of them. It's not too much work, it's not too smelly. And, yeah, we just love them, and I hope that you vote yes. Do you have anything to say? No, okay. Thank you.
More comments?
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Hangee, 1021 Highland Avenue. I want to thank everyone for all the work that they've done this year, because it's been very thorough. After the last meeting when I was here, we did take some time to meet with our city council district rep, Lauren, and learned many things, and had a good conversation, I think, so that we could all understand more and feel that we've been heard. I do want to cite a couple of things in terms of where this has been successful, and everybody's been happy. And, you know, those are generalities. And so, there are other published articles, you know, in California, the LA Times reported that some cities establish rooster days and 10 days to turn things in, because they were having, they encourage responsible surrender, and they reduce abandonment rates. And in Portland, Oregon, similar. Same within Tampa, Florida. I know those are much larger cities than here in Lafayette, but Lafayette is growing, and it is very exciting to see our community. And, you know, for those of us who've lived here a long time, it's exciting to see the development, it's exciting to see how our city has grown, but in a responsible way. And I feel that there is still, there's, we live in an era where there is access to news all the time, but not the right news, I think, for Lafayette. If it weren't for Dave Bangert and other local information access, the majority of the people and the constituents in the city don't know about this yet. And so it's really hard, the responsibility that I think you have on your shoulders to make good decisions for our city, but also still listening to your constituents. And I'd like you to consider carefully that I think many of your constituents don't know. You maybe have heard from some, and it maybe has outweighed the number of those of us who are saying, hey, wait a minute, we just found out about this, like, 30 days ago, and we're not for it. But I think it's because most don't know. And it sounds like from the gentleman a little bit ago, I wondered how many houses in Lafayette really could have a chicken coop. My backyard is too small. I have a very large side yard, but I can't have it there. So most of us in Highland Park maybe wouldn't qualify with the clarification of the language in the ordinance, but I really, I want you, I still want to ask you to vote no. No to chicken coops in our neighborhoods, no to the noise, because there is noise, because one of my neighbors had five or more, and I could hear them when they were hungry, and they were getting fed. I did hear them. So no to the noise, no to the odor, no to the health concerns, no to declining property values that could happen if someone, if I'm going to sell my house and there's a chicken coop next door, and the owner, that may be the prospective buyer, they're not going to get it. That's going to hurt me. No to the added strain on city resources. I think there was some information from the street department shared that the street department was not in support of this ordinance, so I think that really speaks volumes, because they are the ones who are going to be taking the chicken waste. And I think that is unfair to those workers who already have a job that most of us wouldn't want to do, especially on a hot, stinky summer day. I also want to say no to neighbors and giving the responsibility for neighbors to police each other, and the disharmony that the ordinance could create, and no to changing the character of our community. I'd like for you to protect our neighborhoods and vote no to keep our city safe and clean and welcoming by voting no to the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments?
Eric Stevens, 1024 Highland Avenue. After hearing some of the commentary or the suggestion by the sanitary department, it seems pretty clear that our resolution would be no in our house. We do have adjoining homes that used to have chickens, they have left. The homes on either side of us would qualify for the zoning requirements as per as is stated. So at this point in time, for our household, we would hope that the resolution would be stricken down. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good afternoon, my name is Alice Cochrane. I live at 3334 Piper's Glen Drive. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I was just here to voice my support for this ordinance. I just saw all the people who have come out to voice their support, and especially the children who have come up to support. As an educator, I really, really want to punch that these kids want this education, and these kids want something to do other than an iPad. They want to go outside, they want to go have fun, and if they want to go do it in an educational way, and in a safe way, and they can also do it in their backyard, then I really want to support that. And so, I just wanted to come up here and say that I think it's a very valuable thing for our education to have chickens. And the man who came up and gave his support points with the data, thank you. Numbers don't lie, and if we only have 17%, then that's 17% of houses who can, you know, give their kids some education on where food comes from, you know, from the chicken, and even, you know, about a chicken itself. So, yeah, that's all I just have to say. So thank you for your time, council. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bernie Kroll, 223 West Stonebreaker Court, Ashton Woods. Be very brief today. Oh, I said I talked too much last time, so, which is probably true. If all those who raise chickens were diligent in raising them, this would not be an issue. Unfortunately, those who are not diligent will be those who will adversely affect our neighborhoods. Please vote no.
More comments?
Well, my name is Phillip Schaefer. I live on 65 Perrin Avenue, and I've always enjoyed the thought of taking care of chickens. I think it would be really fun for my family and my siblings and my cousins, and I was really hoping that you would give us the chance for one year of taking good care of chickens.
Hi, I'm Katie Schaefer, 625 Perrin Avenue. Just wanted to bring up something that seems really important to keep in mind when we're voting. I would like you to consider voting yes for this ordinance. The mayor, Rosorsky, very wisely, I think, suggested the year sunset, is that what it's called? Yeah, which seems like a great, great and wise advice, because it allows the theory to be tested in our area. Not all cities are the same, although it's really helpful to have the evidence that we can see from the cities that have done this in the past, cities that actually surround us. You know, West Lafayette, from what I understand, allows chickens, and I don't recall hearing any big issues about that over there. And then likewise, Carmel. Both of these cities seem to be cities that take good care of their citizens, that seem to be thriving cities, and we don't see any evidence, negative evidence there in those cities. This is my first time coming to this, so I, one thing that I observed when I was listening to the negative comments is I noticed that a lot of them seem to be coming from the same place. So it's very clear, Highland Park, if I'm not mistaken, so it's very clear that Highland Park residents really do not want chickens. I don't, do they have an HOA? I'm not sure about that. Like, maybe something like that could help. But just something to keep in mind is that, you know, I got this information, Highland Park takes up less than one square mile of our city limits, and the city of Lafayette consists of 30 square miles, 18,800 acres. And, and just to think that the majority of the negative, if the majority of the negative feedback is coming from one very tiny area, I would not want that to influence a decision that's going to affect so much of a larger space, because there are so many different people in different, with different, you know, yard setups and such, such that having a coop would not look the same as it would in Highland Park. Please vote yes to give us this one-year chance to show that it can be done, and if it turns out that it's not a good idea, then you can say, well, we proved that it's not a good idea for our town, and we can be good stewards of the town.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name's Beau Brumley. I live at 1010 Heath Street. Thanks for the time to speak today. I believe that bans on backyard hens don't work. They're already here, we already keep chickens in Lafayette right now, and Animal Control can only cite possession, not for noise, odor, or poor care, and that means neighbors' real concerns can't be addressed. This ordinance fixes that by giving Animal Control clear authority to enforce sanitation, setbacks, and humane standards. Regulation, not prohibition, is how we actually protect neighborhoods and animals alike. At the last meeting, we heard concerns, but this ordinance directly addresses them. Hens are quieter than dogs, and roosters are prohibited. Predators already live here, but secure coops, which are required, would prevent attracting them. Can't really say the same about dog food that's left outside, or mismanaged trash bins that are already in every neighborhood. Five hens produce less waste than a medium-sized dog, and sanitation rules will be enforceable. Property values haven't been harmed in West Lafayette, where hens are already legal, and Animal Control has confirmed they support this ordinance because it gives them the tools they currently lack. But this isn't about addressing fears. Backyard hens also bring benefits: fresh eggs, reduced food insecurity, natural pest control, and less food waste. They also provide educational value for children and encourage sustainable practices at home. These are real positive impacts that strengthen our community. It's also worth noting that public input shows more support than opposition. At the first reading last month, I think it was like eight residents were in favor, five against, and that tells us this ordinance reflects the will of the community, not just a vocal minority. And both Animal Control and the Humane Society, the very authorities responsible for animal welfare, support this ordinance and are prepared to enforce it. Finally, I believe it's opposition to this ordinance that needs justification. A prohibition that cannot be enforced and doesn't address actual concerns is the real problem. This ordinance is the solution. It sets standards, creates accountability, and gives Animal Control the tools they need. West Lafayette proves it works, and the one-year sunset clause ensures this council can revisit it in the air, or sooner if necessary. To those council members that are still opposed, I respect your concerns, but the facts show they've been addressed. Regulation protects neighborhoods, this ban protects nothing. I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Muir, 1101 Central Street. I do not live in Highland Park. I would not have known about this had it not been for a friend who lived in Highland Park. None of you have reached out to all of your constituents, and I believe, had you reached out to your constituents, we'd have a far larger attendance this evening, and far more people who would show concern. Thank you.
Vote no.
Tim Poquette, 2301 Bennett. I'm just curious, do we have, like, numbers on the survey? How many people answered that survey that went out?
I do not have that information right now.
Do we have any idea?
No.
Okay. Do we know, four against, any?
If I recall, and again, I said this last month as well, it was an unofficial, non-scientific survey, just to gauge interest. I do believe that there were a number of responses, majority of which were in support of chickens, but again, it was an informal survey.
Sure, yeah, of course it is. I just noticed when I was looking at it, there were dozens of people, over 100 people that were responding to this. So if we could get the numbers, that's interest, you know? I mean, not everybody can make it to these meetings. I know plenty of people that are in favor of this, that are working right now. Maybe they've emailed you, you know, maybe not. But I don't think we can base it just on the attendance tonight, and I disagree with the idea that the city's not aware of this. It's been in the news... It's been in the newspaper, Dave Bangard's articles, et cetera. People are very well aware.
You speak up a little bit.
People are very well aware, sorry. Yeah, it's been in articles, newspapers, on the internet. I think everything has pretty much been said that I was going to say. I'm all for this. I've had hens before, haven't been a problem. Salmonella, just wash your hands. I mean, some of this stuff is basic things and some fear mongering that I really think we can take a year to look at. And if it, like they've said, if it becomes a problem, fine, but please give us a chance. The law-abiding citizens who are waiting to do this, you've put the ordinance in place. Let us use it, and then we'll check in again in a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I have something I'd like to add.
Once again, Linda Moore, 624 Cherokee Avenue, Lafayette. The survey, that's one thing I want... People didn't even have to be Lafayette residents to answer that survey. So I don't see how that can speak to this at all. Secondly, how are we going to enforce the parameters for those coops? Who's going to check the site, your property site? I submitted a question earlier about that. How is that going to be defined?
Actually, I'll step in and help answer that, and Sarah Goins can add. So this ordinance was drafted without an inspection requirement for the setbacks because the rules themselves, the setbacks, the coop construction, sanitation, and flock limits are objective and enforceable. And the permit application, when people do submit it, will have to check a box to affirm that they have read the ordinance, that they understand what the rules are, and they're agreeing to comply with them. So it does not have an independent inspection process as part of issuing the permit, which is very similar to how some of our other animal control ordinances are. However, complaint-based, and if there were issues, animal control gets called out, then they will be able to address those issues. It was a balance in looking at the scale of what we were doing with the hens and resources to try to find that right balance.
Okay, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any more comments?
Hi, Stephanie Joyce, 836 Shawnee Avenue. I ask that you vote no. I really don't want the chickens in my side yard next to my neighbors, listening to them, hearing them. I don't want the burden it is would be on the city. I don't want the increased salmonella, even though we all wash our hands. You know, I am from Highland Park, but my vote counts too, so please vote no.
Thank you.
Jeremy Speerings, 658 Perrin Avenue. I just want to point out something. I've been to other cities that have ordinances that do allow chickens. And in these cities, I've gone on long walks and seen like, you know, maybe one or two chicken coops and several miles of walking. So I think people have this kind of assumption that if we allow chickens and if 7% and 13% of the houses are eligible for chickens, that means that 7% to 13% of the people in Lafayette are going to have chickens. I don't think that's even close to the case. I'm guessing it's going to be less than 10% of the people who are allowed to have them that actually do it or that do it long-term. So kind of part of the fear mongering that people have been talking about, I don't think we should assume that we're going to have however many chickens with however much poop multiplied by this many people times five, and we just can't take care of that. Like realistically, we're not talking about having millions and millions of chickens in Lafayette. There's going to be a very limited number by the limited amount of people that are allowed to do it by the way that this ordinance was written, which I think was written very well. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would ask that you vote yes.
Other comments concerning this? Can they come up? Let's be very brief, because you've already made three minutes of comments.
Yeah, I did know I could speak twice, so thank you.
I don't think you're allowed to.
You tell me no?
You didn't use all your time.
Talk about not that many people might have it, have chickens, there's a fear. But if it happens next to you, it does make a difference. And if chickens coop can be 10 feet from your property line, it is... There is a difference between how many are going to be here, how many are not. And I believe it's said, but I wanted to emphasize, if a chicken coop is 10 feet from your house and you want to sell your house, that has a negative impact for some potential buyers. Vice versa, if you're looking to buy a house and there is a chicken coop within 10 feet of the backyard, there is an impact. So there's a larger story here, but also it could impact people individually anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. No comments? Any questions from the council?
I would just like to make one quick comment. I know that we've belabored this, but the citizens came to me in February on this, and it has been enlightening to me. Many of my friends are out there on both sides of this issue, so I will make at least 50% of everyone in the audience unhappy, no matter which way I vote. So, and I think that's true of the rest of the council. We have been very diligent in the way that we have approached this, and I know it is not popular. And the one thing that is different in Lafayette as opposed to Congress is that we all have to live with what we pass. So we will have to live next door to this if it does pass as well. So I am very gratified for the people who have come forward and feel very passionately on both sides of this issue. I thank you for your input. And please know that regardless of how we vote on this, we do care about our community and are willing to give our citizens a chance, if we do vote for it, to show their responsibility to our community as well as everyone else. So thank you all the council for your input. I know it has been a difficult issue. We have cussed and discussed it together. We've come a long way on this and had input, and I want you to know that we all take this very, very seriously. So please understand that.
I would also like to comment, as a former teacher, I love the fact that so many children were here speaking and doing their civic duty. So thank you for coming.
Madam President, may I? I want to thank everybody again for, like Madam President did tonight, for coming out tonight. But more importantly, I want to thank you for expressing your opinion respectfully. It's so important in this day and age, especially to teach our children how to agree or disagree respectfully. So thank you for coming out and behaving in that manner. I appreciate it. I wanted to let everybody know my reasoning's behind my vote tonight because it is different than my last vote, but I wanted also to let you know why. I will not be supporting this ordinance tonight, and these are the reasons why. Number one is that in this current climate, especially nationally, where we're all so focused on what makes us different or estranged from other people, I have heard from countless number of my constituents how it is tearing their neighborhood apart. In this city, I think one of the beautiful things about our community is that we work so hard to be good neighbors to one another. And the thought that something might exist that creates divisiveness in a neighborhood, that maybe now neighbors aren't checking on each other anymore or talking to each other anymore or visiting one another anymore because of this ordinance just doesn't sit well with me. Secondly, I did conduct an independent survey through the Nextdoor app of just my district, and I did ask people to sign in with their address. I only asked them, do you vote yes or would you want me to vote yes or no, and write two to three sentences why. I had 78 respondents from my district in that response. Forty-five were against, none of them in Highland Park, and 33 were for. So I feel it's my duty to represent my constituents, and of those that I heard from, their response was more against this ordinance than for this ordinance. So a gentleman spoke earlier that we'd never hear why you vote the way you vote. I wanted to make sure to let you know why I will be voting that way. Thank you.
Yeah, I have... As an honor, I represent the city at the Area Plan Commission, and R1 is... R1 in Tibbunou County does allow chickens. But it also has a lot of, and I'm sure Jackie's already checked all this out, it has to do with residents, property lines, and so on. But what they recommend in here, lots smaller than 8,000 square feet, allow one hen for 800 square feet. And so basically, when you're talking about your chickens or where they're going, you know, how many you're going to... You can only have five. But if you have a very small area in your backyard and you set in 10 feet, and you have to have 800 square feet, and that's a recommendation of USDA also, that's what it takes to have a chicken. And so again, I'm happy that everybody spoke their opinion. But I just want to give you a little update on somebody had talked about zoning.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one comment. We already have chickens in Lafayette. The thing that we don't have is control. We have no control over this situation right now. This ordinance will give us control over this situation. Will give us the opportunity to make sure that this is done in a safe and healthy fashion. I understand that everyone has voiced concerns about salmonella and all that kind of thing, health concerns and all that. I haven't seen salmonella running across the river from West Lafayette. I've not seen, you know, outbreaks of disease. I figure if West Lafayette can do it, we can too, because it's really, really simple. Very few of us will have the lot size to get this done. Even fewer will have the motivation to do it. Fewer than that will maintain that motivation over time. We have a one-year sunset on this, at which time we will look at this and decide whether we made a mistake or not. But I have to see that this goes forward. I have to try to make this go forward. Because as I said, it's not going to be that bad. I don't think so. And if not, I'll be right here in this seat. Y'all can come yell at me. I'm voting yes.
I make a comment in voting. I know people have good intentions with this proposal, and I do. But I am concerned about the other side keeping the chicken coops clean, proper disposal of the waste material, our garbage collectors, everybody that has to deal with it, and making sure neighbors are not impacted. I heard from a lot of persons in my district, and a lot of the complaints was, well, they can have it somewhere else, but I don't want it in my neighborhood. And for various reasons that have been discussed. But I, therefore, with the majority of my people, they told me no. I would vote no for this.
Any other questions or comments?
Yep. Out of the... As I mentioned in the last meeting, it was overwhelmingly four early on in this. We had two meetings and no, zero people spoke against. But now, four people in the last two days have told me that they would have come forward much earlier had they known. So I think one of the ideas that was brought up that people did not know this is valid, very valid, because I'll talk to somebody at a restaurant and say, hey, you live in the city, what do you think about chickens? Oh, you guys are going to do that? No, I wouldn't do that, no. So there are a lot of noes out there that I'm not sure we know about. And in defense of the... I don't know why the shade's being thrown at Highland Park, as a kid who grew up there, don't live there anymore. These folks lived with that. I think Ms. Schrader said that she had next-door neighbors who had chickens into the... So they do have... They're speaking from a position that they have lived with this for. So this is the most 50/50 I have ever been on anything. Maybe if I talk longer, I can wait for the clerk to not roll. But yeah, I have concerned both ways. Because it's still, you know, the same folks have come to me, and a lot of folks have been here tonight that are for it. I'm still going to support it, but my antennas will be up. And if this sunset comes around and we're hearing a lot of complaints, I will definitely be changing to no, because I am personally... I won't, you know, I stood in my backyard today and looked at both sides and thought, I really don't want chickens next to me for the reason that a lot of people gave. Tonight, I will support it, though.
Madam President, in interest of time, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Okay, will the clerk call a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-30? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
No.
Weas?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Ours Meyer?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Downing?
No.
It's a tie. Madam President? Aye. Okay. Ordinance passes.
Thank you.
Let me just say that you have just witnessed what is my consideration of the best of government, where your local government officials listen to all sides of an issue and have to make a very tough decision. And so I hope that you will be kind and considerate to all of us who voted on either side of this issue, because it was not an easy issue.
Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-31.
An ordinance establishing rates and the charges for the use and services rendered by the Water Works Utility of the City of Lafayette, Indiana.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I would give people a few minutes to clear out.
Okay.
So everybody will be able to hear and stuff for the people that are leaving.
Do the recess.
Put it on the floor, and then we amend it. Yeah, put it on the floor, and then we amend it. Yeah, yeah. Put it on the floor. Yeah. Put it on the floor. Yeah. Put it on the floor, and then we amend it. Yeah, yeah. Put it on the floor. 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 Yeah. I mean, everybody voted.
As I was saying, I move that we hear an approved ordinance 2025-31 on second reading.
Suck it. Mayor?
Jackie will amend it after we do the talking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So the ordinance before you, we voted on it last month. We had all the folks from Indianapolis up here and everything doing the presentations. But we did want to go over it again tonight. As you know, we're looking to do a water rate increase here in the city of Lafayette. We've only done two in the last... Since 2001, there was one. We didn't do another until 2018, so 17 years in 2018, we did one. We're starting this process now. It would go effect in 2026, which will be another eight years. So we have been very judicious in handling our finances and trying to be very frugal in what we've done. But you can't look at any other utility that you know, from cable to electric, that's only done two rate increases in what will be 26 years. So we are looking to increase, and I do want to go over what we're going to use the funds for. As you know, we are expanding our capacity, ensure the long-term growth of Lafayette to open up new areas for development that we need to open up in our community. We're going to continue to do improvements at the Glick Well Field to build redundancy and ensure service continuity to our community. You know that we're working on doing water main, sewer mains extensions. We're looking at doing a new well field, all kinds of things. It adds up to about $70 million in improvements that we're going to do. I think it is important to know that about $30 million of that, we have talked about, is the lead service line replacement that we're mandated to do with the EPA in that 10-year window. As you know, we have got some grants to work on this first $5 million phase, but we don't know if we will get any more of those. And so we have to put a mechanism in place to raise that money to do that, to meet that federal mandate. Now, if we do get additional funds, either through low or no-interest loans or somebody gives us a grant, that money will actually be separated off, and the rates will actually go down. This is being set up so we can actually do that as we move along through the process. So we'll have that. So we'll have that flexibility in there. The rate increase that we're looking at for the average customer, the first one, and this is based off 5,000 gallons, would go from 1781 a month to 2332 in Phase 1, and that's about a 30.9% increase. And then it would go from 2961 to, I'm sorry, 2961 in Phase 2. That's about a 27% increase. So when that compounds itself, it's about 62, 66.2%. That sounds like a big percent, but it's based off a very small number. And like I said, we have not hardly done any increases over the years. It's very important. Water is one of those things that everybody needs. We need it on very personal levels, and we need it for business. We need it for industry. Water has been a hot topic in Indiana over the last several years, and around the country, actually, and so it will continue to be. We start the process after this final vote with the filings with the IURC. There'll be ample additional time for citizens to comment on this, public hearings that they'll be able to come to. Because even though we ask for this, doesn't mean we're going to get it. There will be a final body in Indianapolis that will make that determination. I feel good about what we've asked for. We've been very judicious in it. I think we have a very strong case, why we need it, why we're doing what we're doing, and how that money will be used, and the fact that we haven't done a lot of increases. You've had the sheet. If you look at, we're almost at the bottom in the state of Indiana for the lowest water rates in the state, and almost at the bottom for the lowest water and sewer rates combined also. As part of this, we are gonna go to what's called a system development fee. We've, we've done cost recovery methodology in the past, and they've really kind of frowned on that going forward. So we have made that decision to follow their recommendation and go to a system development fee. And it will be much easier to calculate. I think it will be much clearer for people and developers to understand. That's what the amendment is about tonight. We've set that fee at $520, and Jackie will explain that here in a minute. We think that's reasonable. We want to be competitive in the, in the landscape. We want to keep it close to our neighbors in West Lafayette and here in the, in the community. So I think we've landed a number that helps represent fiscal responsibility, our rate payers, the ability to develop, and the ability to get those things done in the community that will continue to move us forward. So we, again, we would appreciate your support on this. This really is just the beginning of about a year-long process, and it may change over time. You know, we're looking at, right now, is can we get another grant? So maybe before you even see the end of this, money could be subtracted out of it. But we can't, we can't chance that. And for, just for clarity, I believe we should get rid of lead service lines. That is an important thing that we need to be doing for people in our community that have those. It is a good thing to do. It is just a very expensive thing to do. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Madam President, I got a question for the mayor. The, when the IURC reviews our case, do we typically have representation at those meetings? Or is that something that it's, they only call if there's something major?
No, we'll have representation at that. We, we work with a firm out of Indianapolis, and Jackie works on it and then coordinates with Dave McGinsey at Greenbaum &amp; Dahl, I guess.
Dentons.
Oh, they call, yeah. Yeah, they've changed, they've got bought. So it's Dentons now, so yes. And that's who's helped us on our other ones in the past. He's very knowledgeable and does a very good job. He has a very good relationship with the boards, and he knows what will work and what won't. This is a no-nonsense, straightforward, pragmatic proposal that we, that we have here.
Perfect, thank you.
It was Bing and McHale, I think, when we originally started. Then Greenbaum &amp; Dahl, now Dentons, so, yeah. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and then Jackie will go into the amendment.
Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public?
Pearl Speakman, 923 South 26th Street, Lafayette, Indiana. I hear this, all of us here, but I'm telling you one thing right now. Somebody is filming here. I can, it's Mr. Perry's area, 11th and Union. There's probably 10 or 15 great big oil spills where that guy's worked on cars and parked cars up there. It looks like an old Kentucky home. I don't mind paying for water in my stuff I put in my garden, and it goes down the drain. I'll be dang gone. He had 15 bays of cars up there working on them. Come on. Now, I think Jay Rosine is the one to help us out on this. But somebody needs to go up there and check that auditorium out, because he's got oil spills. Like I said, I can go down to Kentucky and show you pictures all day.
Other comments about this ordinance?
I'll just comment real quick, because it's kind of not, not related to this, but Pearl did bring that up last time, and I don't know, I'm assuming I went to the right place, but I went by 11th and Union, because he was complaining that the cars were blocking the sidewalks. I took pictures on my phone, and I did not see any cars blocking the sidewalk. I didn't look for oil spills while I was there, but I, I want the council to know and Mr. Speakman to know that I have been driving by there. I've taken pictures. I didn't see any cars blocking the sidewalk.
Mr. Rosine is taking care of the problem.
Well, I went right after the last meeting, so Jay Rosine's on a two-week, is on a two-week vacation on an Alaskan cruise, so.
He started his four weeks.
All right, well, we are, we are, even though that is unrelated to this, we are working on that issue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Questions or comments about the water increase?
Kind of an unrelated topic, but on the same idea of the bird problem. We have a serious invasion with the geese. They cannot be considered a, they can't be considered, they're an invasive species. There's no place in this town that you can't walk, that you're not crawling all over goose poo. So I think it is time we do something about the geese.
Ma'am?
There's a public comment.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, I have a hearing problem, so.
We're on, we're on a water rate increase right now, not general comment.
This is all new, and you said comments, so I was just talking about comments.
Sorry about that. We have time to go back and think it over.
Any questions or concerns about the water increase ordinance?
Sorry.
Okay, we need to amend this.
Yes, so as the mayor alluded to, there is an amendment that we are asking that the council make before adopting this on second reading today with regard to the system development charge. I did distribute out earlier today an amendment that actually will reduce that system development charge to a much lower rate, very equivalent to what West Lafayette is charging. And so that is an amendment that the mayor and I, we discussed with our advisors, and we would like to make. So we would like a motion to amend the ordinance, to substitute the new system development charge table, and then to adopt the ordinance in full.
So moved.
Second.
Lower is better.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now we can vote on the amended ordinance.
Now we can vote on the amended ordinance.
Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wiese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Amendment ordinance passes eight to zero.
Our next one is ordinance 2025-32.
An ordinance concerning the construction of additions and improvements to the waterworks of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, issuance of revenue bonds to provide the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, distribution of the revenues of said waterworks, safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinance inconsistent therewith.
Okay, Mrs. Williamson?
I hear we move and approve the ordinance.
Second.
All right, this is a sister ordinance that goes along with the water rate case that the mayor just discussed. This ordinance will authorize, upon the conclusion of IURC proceeding, for us to issue bonds totaling up to, not to exceed $70,225,000. These bonds will be issued in multiple series. These bonds are issued to complete the projects that the water rate is to support, but the water rate takes time for us to go in, so we need to get the bonds, so we can go ahead and proceed with the projects. The bonds will be sold to the Indiana Finance Authority. Interest will not exceed 7%, and the bonds will have a repayment period over 35 years. And as I already stated, council approval today is just to approve it if IURC approves our rate case. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No additional sister, since it's a sister bill, no additional amendment to this?
No, no amendment for that one.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the council about this ordinance? Any questions or comments about this bond issue from the public? Okay.
Bite them down, that's all.
Singing on?
Aye. Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wiese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Madam President, I just like clarification that, because that was amended, that's still second reading, so this will not come back correct.
That is correct, that was the second final reading as amended, correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very nice.
Now, ordinance is for first reading. Ordinance 2025-27.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tepica New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R1B to R1T, 2414 Butler, Andrew Stanko petitioner, which was tabled at the last meeting.
And at this point, the petitioner has withdrawn this ordinance. And once it removed, and so we just need a voice vote on
Removed from the table.
Removing this, this ordinance.
I move to remove ordinance 2025-27.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote? I don't think we need one.
Just a voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Okay, so ordinance, the next one is ordinance, 2025-33.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tepica New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to PDRS, Lafayette Transitional Housing Center, McCarty Hope Apartments, planned development petitioner.
Okay, whose turn is it? Mr. Linker?
I move to hear ordinance 2025-33 on first reading.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bumbleberg?
For the record, I'm Joe Bumbleberg with Ball &amp; Eggleston, representing Transitional Housing. The director of the institution is here with me this evening. This matter appeared before the Area Plan Commission, and it is a planned development, and it is designed to create permanent supportive housing. It will have units in the first phase, 26, and there will be a common area, a clubhouse, and it will serve inhabitants on this site with the supportive services that are necessary. I think I'm gonna get away from my notes to suggest to you that, right now, in this country, we have a crisis of the people who are homeless. In my experience with the American Legion, I have a number that will scare you. Forty-four homeless veterans a day are committing suicide. That's an incredible number. And I pass that on to you to say to you that what is going to happen here is just Lafayette's contribution to solving what is a much greater problem. Indeed, if you've been reading the Indianapolis Star, they have been writing about their problem with homelessness for months, and they don't have any way of getting their arm around it. But what I can tell you from my Legion experience is a significant number of veterans fall in that homeless category. And the reason for that is the homeless business is an infection and creates additional health problems. So I want to tell you here that Lafayette, as a community, is getting ahead of the game by doing this. The homeless people, or, I mean, sorry, the transitional people will tell you that they have five other of these supportive housing institutions in the community. And my guess is, you probably couldn't find it if you went out and hunted for the five. They are just well-placed servicing the people who desperately need them. So I'm going to quit here and say to you, for the benefit of a very needy population, approve this, please.
Good to see you back, Mr. Pearl.
Questions or comments from the council concerning this ordinance? Pardon?
Mayor's gonna say something.
Joe, I'm gonna talk there for a minute, if you don't mind there.
I would give a comment. This is a partnership, and I suppose I'm stealing your thunder.
That's right, I wasn't sure he was gonna let me have the microphone for a while there. And I, but I do respect my elders.
Thank you.
Since him and my dad graduated from high school together, so I can, I can say that, right? So, thank you, Mr. Bumbleberg. With all due respect, we appreciate your presentation. But right, this is an important program for us. We, we want to partner with Transitional Housing on this. As you know, the city acquired that property in a trade for the airport property, because it sits adjacent to our new Public Works Campus, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't get landlocked or if there's some additional needs that we have, like a brush dump, if we can get that all worked out, and some different things. So, but we also have a role to play in helping solve these challenges if we can. And it's not easy, right? It is difficult to find locations that will work for these types of facilities for people that desperately need it. And we felt that this site, ironically, even though it's, may not feel like it, the reason that we built the Public Works Campus where we did is because it's just about in the middle of town now, right? So just about in that center location, there's a bus line there. As you heard, it's, it's gonna have, I think it's gonna have a dog park even too, associated with it, and, and a clubhouse and some things. And I think it'll get some folks services and a place to live that will really make a difference and impact their lives in our community, and we can help be part of the solution. And it's a good spot for it. We have the land, that's gonna be our contribution to the, to the project, is donating land or a dollar, whatever you had to do. But, so I would, do appreciate your support, and we'll make sure that it's done well, that it's done right. If there's any adjoining property owners that have any questions or concerns, we will absolutely sit down with them and make sure we get those addressed. That's a nice thing about being a PD, we have that, that opportunity. So we would appreciate everybody's support on this important project for our community.
Mayor, I got a quick question. What's the timeline on the actual construction and ribbon cutting? Is it, are we looking at fall of '26?
You know, I don't think we, I personally do not know.
No, no problem, I just.
Probably '27, Jennifer said. It'll take a while to get through and the bidding, and there's, there is gonna be land prep that we're gonna have to do out there with the road, that start a road they can use and that the city can use. And so there's, there's still some logistics to work out, but this is another important step in making it a reality.
Thank you.
Just clarification, this is predominantly for elderly and veterans, correct?
Predominantly, I don't think, that is correct, predominantly. I don't think you can say 100% of, to qualify, but yes, it is predominantly for veterans and the elderly. Yes, ma'am.
And having worked at Lafayette Urban Ministry, and Mr. Bumbleberg is correct, that many homeless veterans, it's a big problem in the United States. And so the fact that we can do our small part would be very good. Thank you.
Right, anybody else?
Any other questions from the council about this ordinance? Any questions from the public or comments from the public about this ordinance?
Pearl Speakman, 923 South 26th Street, Lafayette, Indiana. I want to say I'm 5,000% for this. The veterans have been cheated for years. If it wasn't for the veterans, and I ain't talking, don't piss me off, I'm talking about World War I, World War II. They had a hell of a lot of force than I did. I was in Vietnam War. But there's nothing else better than helping out the veterans, because they helped every one of us in this room.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Nate McBurnett, 802 North 9th Street, Unit 31. I worked for the Area Plan Commission, I worked on this project, so I'm very happy to see it moving forward. I did want to say, I, I write- I did want to say, I write the county's rental report every year. Just some data from last year's rental report. Senior citizens or individuals 65 and older have a 25% rent burden rate in our community, which is larger than all of our peer communities that we compared it against. Four communities in Indiana, eight communities regionally, many of them Big Ten communities, we have the highest rate of rent burden among those communities. And those are individuals that are housed, so it's an affordability issue that moves, that goes beyond just being homeless. I did want to say that the bus route that currently serves that section of McCarty is planned to be phased out, so I don't know what kind of advocacy you all can have with city bus, but it's really important that that bus line stays in place, especially if this project is approved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Trum. I've, it's been a long two-year struggle. I was a successful medical massage technician for 20 years, and I've been here in Tepico New for 10 years. I am sharing this because I've had family members commit suicide, and I currently struggle with a very severe, very complex disability called functional neurological disorder. It is a kind of a complex form of PTSD. I have been homeless, I am struggling with transportation, the list goes on. My disability comes with everything, including the kitchen sink. So I'm asking you to help me so I can have a job. I will work with you to make this happen. Now, I am asking for a paid job. It's exhausting. I deal with mobility devices, and it can vary every day. I can have a seizure in a flipping moment. I'm currently shaking right now. I can't afford Uber or Lyft. I just recently found out the city bus has changed. There's so many restrictions with, you know, transportation. They've restricted some of the time schedule, they've, with access, you require 48 hours. I know I can take transportation through my insurance, but that even requires three days' notice. I've struggled with my mental health through all this, so I am begging Lafayette to make these changes. I am happy to find out the city bus is reimagining. I want to make Lafayette nationwide because I want to go back to massage therapy and doing what I love. So I want to specialize in FND, bringing all sorts of people with disabilities, senior citizens who struggle day to day. Thank you.
Other comments from the public about this ordinance? Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on 2025-33?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is ordinance 2025-34.
An amendment to ordinance 2010-11, establishing a local centennial, 604 South 6th Street, Oppenheimer House, Conservation District in the City of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Reynolds?
I move to hear and vote on ordinance 2025-34.
Second.
Michael Senate, Economic Development, here to answer any questions that you have. Obviously, what you have before you is to create a conservation district to that address, also known as the Oppenheimer House. This was presented to the owners of the Oppenheimer House back in February, just before I started. Historic Preservation voted on this in July, and it's just getting to you for first reading now. It's my understanding that sometimes you like to do more than one of these at a time, but it didn't look like we were going to have another one of these this year, so went ahead and got it on now, and we'll see what comes our way in the next few months.
And this is a voluntary conservation district, correct?
Yes, it is. Yep, and it protects the property.
Thank you.
And it's been through the Historic Preservation Committee, and it doesn't have anything to do with the World War II, Oppenheimer bomb, or anything like that, if anybody was wondering. No controversy there at all.
Questions or comments from the council on this? Any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-34?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we have one resolution, Resolution 2025-15.
A resolution approving the inter-local cooperation agreement concerning the redevelopment of the John T. Myers Pedestrian Bridge.
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2025-15.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Madam President, this is an agreement, as you know, the Myers Bridge is an important feature of our community and links Lafayette and West Lafayette, and brings us all together for many different types of activities. With, like many old structures, we have to do maintenance, and recently removed a significant log jam from it, which was a partnership between Lafayette, West Lafayette, and Tepico New County to split the cost on that. On this particular project, Lafayette and West Lafayette will be working together to do work on the underneath portion of the bridge, work that primarily will work to strengthen the bridge. I won't go into the real technical things that they'll be doing, but then a big, big piece of it's going to be cleaning and painting. It's not been cleaned and painted in a long time, and to make sure that there is not rusting and that we're taking care of it. So, probably about a $3 million job in total, because you can imagine, that is not an easy process for someone to do, the underside of a bridge of that magnitude, so Lafayette and West Lafayette will be splitting that cost, and this is the agreement to get that project moving. And the timeline, Cindy and I are probably going to have our hands full figuring out what's going to happen to the fireworks this year, because the bridge will probably be under construction at the time, so we're going to be tackling that. But we'd appreciate it, and Jackie can add any technical, legal comments that she wants, but appreciate it. It's just another good sign of us taking care of infrastructure in the two communities working together to share those burdens. So, thank you.
I just expressed to Councilman Reynolds that I remember when it was brand new.
I think, like all the rest of us, there's always upkeep that you have to do on those things.
We all need paint jobs, don't we?
Y'all need paint jobs.
No, I need sandblades.
One of my most harrowing driving experiences.
Any questions or other concerns from the council, from the public? Any question, concerns about this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on Resolution 2025-15?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Okay, on miscellaneous and new business, we need to set a public hearing for 2026 Lafayette City Budget and 2026 GLP-C Budget on Thursday, October 9th at 5:00 p.m. Okay, do we have them?
So moved.
And second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports of standing committees? Reports of special committees? Reports by the mayor?
No, ma'am.
Reports of councilmen? Okay, now we're ready for public comment on any other concerns. We've already talked about the rules of public comment, so if you have public comment on other concerns, please come forward.
Pearl speaking, 923 South 22nd Street. I think it's a coincidence, 806 11th, and it's 806 22nd Street. Now, my concern is that I'm having to pay for people to have big trees out in front of their yards with roots going across their sidewalk. That sidewalk belongs to that landlord. When is this city going to make? Now, I know the person that lives on the corner of Virginia and 22nd can damn well afford to buy and fix that sidewalk. This ain't no welfare. What is this? We got an ordinance to make or fix our sidewalk. Make or fix our sidewalk. Don't take it on his shoulders, then put it on mine and on everybody else's. Your sidewalk is your sidewalk. And if it's unsafe, it's your problem, not the mayor's. Hell, the mayor wants to, he can plant a new garden next year, pay for all the plants. But down there on 22nd Street, we got a lot of people that's got the money to do things, but they're waiting for the city to put that old SNAP card out. There are SNAP vehicles, they love that SNAP card. Well, I tell every one of you people, you sit up here and make ordinances. And if you make ordinances, and the mayor, and the chief police, and the engineer don't back you up, you might as well go out there and play golf in Florida somewhere. So make these people that's got money take care of their sidewalks. I had a little, I've had a little boy ask me three times this week, why won't this woman take this root off the sidewalk? And that man right there can testify, that is unsafe. And that's a main road between Jeff High School in Oakland, and right on down to Compton. Now, can I get somebody to make those people that's got money spend a little bit of it? Thank you very much.
I'm ready for you tonight, Pearl. I'm ready. I'm ready. I'm ready for him. It has worked its way to the top, and did get back with us, so Jeremy Grottenner did want me to tell you that on 22nd Street, the one Pearl's been talking to us about for a long time now, that the tree is scheduled to come down later this week, and on September 9th, we are opening quotes to do the sidewalk work, to fix the one that he's been talking about. And the reason we do do that, and the city does pay for it, is we, our policy is that if it is a street tree that's in the parkway, and it's causing the sidewalk to be upheaved, the city fixes the portion of the sidewalk that is being up, you know, that the roots are going through, and that the tree that's actually in the city parkway has caused that. So, the tree should come down later this week, and on September 9th, we'll open bids to actually fix the sidewalk. You know, we do things on priority, we get caught up, and we try to get things done, and it's not just as easy because we do have rules to follow, whether we have to bid something, if we can just do quotes, we do the state QPA procedure, there's all kinds of legal steps that we have to take. We can't just actually just go do things, so, but that one is going to get fixed here for sure.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You know, you ain't about to
That's a thought, yeah, my.
What's he going to talk about?
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, other public comments?
Hello, Eli Egbert, 6809 Church Street, Lafayette, Indiana. I'm going to make a lot of claims tonight, so if any of you guys have any questions about the citations I have for those, please come and talk to me afterwards, because I know I only have three minutes. That being said, what I wanted to talk about was just to bring to all of the council members' attention the rapid growth in technology that is happening in ALPRs. And so ALPRs are automatic license plate readers. And so ALPRs are nothing new, they've been on interstates for years and years. However, the new thing is that they are being integrated with AI technologies across the nation, and this is also happening in Lafayette at multiple locations. And so what has been happening is with the, as the news likes to call it, the AI revolution, technology has been progressing faster than legislature or moral constituents can keep up with. And so part of that has been with these AI-integrated ALPRs, is that it records all data from all cars that pass by it, regardless of whether they're suspected of any type of crime or anything. And so, for instance, what this allows police departments to do is they can search up your name, and then any time a car that has been registered under your name has passed by an ALPR, integrated with AI, it will reference that. And so, in Lafayette, there's only a few cameras that have this, but it's some other cities it's everywhere. And the part I'm concerned about this is the constitutionality of it. Now, I know the decision on whether or not this is legal is a question for the courts, not for here, but I would like to encourage just all the council members to start thinking about this as an actual issue, and to think about how it relates to the privacy and the rights of their constituents. And one thing that a lot of council members can do, it differs from city to city, is all of these AI-integrated ALPRs are licensed by third parties and then contracted out to the police department. That way, it technically doesn't interfere with the Fourth Amendment, because if the police department was doing it by itself, it would be unconstitutional. But one thing that many city councils can do, and I don't know if it works this way here, is just simply not to renew the contract with those third-party surveillance companies. I know I only have three minutes, so, and I know that this is a very weird, new part of technology and governance, so if any of you guys have any questions, I'd love to talk to you about it. I'm not going to pretend to know a lot about law, I'm a simple mechanic, but I'd just like to let the local government know that this is an issue, and to try and keep up with it as technology develops. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Lily Pendleton, I'm at 303 Romig Street. I'm with Queer Haven, Indiana, and Gender Nexus Indy, and I emailed Councilman Brown last week, expressing my support for a gender-affirming care safe haven resolution in Lafayette. This branch of healthcare is currently being threatened by a growing tide of fear and hatred towards an already marginalized group of people. We ask you to, as representatives of the people of Lafayette, to pass a resolution declaring Lafayette a safe place for providers and recipients of gender-affirming care. A brief overview of the resolution passed by Bloomington, Indiana, earlier this year, or last year. First page defines gender-affirming care as a branch of evidence-based, life-saving healthcare. Gender-affirming care, while being targeted for its use by the transgender community, encapsulates all types of hormone-related treatments for menopause, baldness, certain types of cancer, including thyroid cancer, which my mom had, and many other common medical conditions. So it asserts that in all the cases listed above, when hormones are making someone to not feel like themselves, right, that person's access to whatever medical treatment they need should be between them and their doctor, not with excessive input from the government or random people next door, right? That should be between someone and their healthcare provider. highlights their desire to not enforce the laws of other jurisdictions when it comes to prosecuting individuals accessing or providing gender-affirming care unless absolutely required by federal law. So I would like to see a similar resolution passed in Lafayette as you guys have many residents whose lives and livelihoods depend on being able to access the gender-affirming care they've been able to receive here safely and legally for decades. I appreciate the ways you guys have already acted in Lafayette's best interest. You voted yes for the transitional housing project tonight. You guys are seemingly true to your ongoing commitment to calling out systemic inequalities and implementing and preserving services that improve the quality of life of your constituents. Gender-affirming care is one of those services, and I would love to see your support for a resolution to protect individuals seeking gender-affirming care in Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other public comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tavish Bryan. I'm a resident in Kokomo, and I'm here as a member of Queer Haven, Indiana to express an invitation for y'all to support the resolution outlined by our previous member, Lily. I'm a teacher in Kokomo, and forgive me if I am stumbling over my words a little bit. I've been working since about 5:00 a.m. this morning. So cut me some slack, please. I'm here as like a representative from Kokomo because we're also trying to pass a similar resolution in Kokomo, working with the city council there. And we're also in conversation with Lilian Young, a person running for a candidate position at the state level who worked hard to get a resolution to protect gender-affirming care passed in Bloomington. We want to pass this resolution to show that there's statewide support from Hoosiers to protect trans people in their community. You know, trans people are under attack in this country, not only at the city level, at the state level, but at the national level. And we want Lafayette to be a part of protecting the lives and the healthcare of trans people. Healthcare is something that we all deserve, but some members of our community are adversely affected in ways that make them more susceptible to the dangers of the lack of healthcare. Just as our homeless veterans are at a greater risk for, you know, for health issues, and disabled members of our community are also at greater risk. So are the trans members of our community. And all those people deserve healthcare, but we are a queer rights organization, and we're fighting for queer people. We want to see healthcare for everyone in this country, but we want to start with the trans community. So we are respectfully inviting you to please support this resolution. We need someone to sponsor this resolution, to bring it to the agenda, to get a vote. So please, consider sponsoring this resolution. We really want to do our best here to protect the trans people of Lafayette, you know, in conjunction with West Lafayette, and they're passing the resolution in Bloomington. And we want to bring the same thing to Kokomo. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Leah Rush, 4414 Fletcher Drive, Lafayette, Indiana. Good evening. I'm representing Queer Haven, Indiana as well, and I'm here to bring forward the resolution we're working on. But what I was going to say has already been said by Lilian Havish, so I will just make a brief personal appeal. I've lived here, I was born in Lafayette. I've lived here my whole life. I'm a student. I've worked here my whole life, and I rely on gender-affirming care that's provided affordably here in Lafayette. I don't have to go out of state. I don't have to go through too many hoops to get what's absolutely life-saving. So if, based on like a national push to make that less accessible, if that was followed through in Lafayette, I'd probably be forced to move elsewhere since it is life-saving healthcare. So I just ask that you work with us in the coming months as we bring forward this resolution, both on a level for the whole community and as I also ask personally. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Other public comment?
Hi, my name is George Magatee, and I live in West Lafayette. I go to Purdue University. I was very happy to be part of the push that got this resolution passed in West Lafayette. And I would just like to cover a couple of key topics. The first one is that it has been mentioned, but gender-affirming care is for everybody. It is not just for transgender people. My girlfriend of four years this coming Friday is in pre-med, and she worked last summer, so not the one that just finished, but the one before that, in an internship with Northwestern Hospital up in North Illinois where my hometown is. And something that she highlighted to me is that she was working in the breast cancer facility with Northwestern. And, for example, when someone that has breast cancer needs the tumor removed from their breast, that may end up leaving them flat-breasted, for example, in the aftermath of that surgery. Many women who get surgery would not want to leave their healthcare procedure flat-chested. They would prefer to undergo plastic surgery in order to maintain their self-image that they had before they were afflicted. And, you know, from my position as a guy who always looked in the mirror and I was like, that's George, I would want that for anybody. There is no reason that only transgender people should not be allowed to receive life-saving healthcare. People will bring up, for example, oh, well, what about kids? Kids have schizophrenia. They have depression. They have OCD. They undergo all kinds of medical necessities. And nobody comes from out of the woodwork to be like, nah, he can't get knee surgery, even though it has a higher rate of regret than transition surgeries. So I would ask you to consider that this is for everybody. It is not just for transgender people, but we should protect the most marginalized and vulnerable people in our community. One more thing that I would like to say is that I'm concerned for potentially my kids in the future. Who's to say that I might not be affected by this kind of thing? It's not the kind of thing that I think is sufficient to go, oh, well, you know, I polled my neighbors and, you know, they said they weren't for it. They've never met a trans person. They only know about them online. So, you know, they were against it. That's not enough. You have to dig deeper than that right now because you have an opportunity to be part of a rare push in this country to do something right for a marginalized, vulnerable community. There is a long history in this country of people that have dropped the mantle. They acted too late. They said sorry, but they made the mistake. They asked for forgiveness and not for permission. That's not enough right now. We're talking about 0.8% of Americans, probably a smaller percentage of Hoosiers. We have to act while we can, while we can still save lives.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment tonight?
Hi, Erin Rush, 4414 Fletcher Drive. I know it's late, so I'll keep it to three minutes. We do technically live barely outside the city limits, and I'm just crossing my fingers for when we get annexed. I know it'll be a while, but we lived in the north end of town for years. My husband is a lifelong Lafayette resident, graduated from Jeff. I've been here for 30 years. And I'm asking you to support the resolution. Hopefully, one can get sponsored and people will support it because my husband and I chose to stay here. I'm originally from Pennsylvania, hated it when I moved here. But we love this community. I love the Midwest, and I love how people respect each other here. And I know it's getting lost in this political climate, but I hope we can get back to, we might not always agree politically, but we can just support our neighbors. And this is such an easy thing to just be like, yeah, we should all have gender-affirming care. I'm getting to a certain age, my husband. It's, you don't realize until it's brought up how many of us use gender-affirming care throughout our lifespans. So to me, this is a no-brainer because not supporting them, it's like we're learning now, repeating certain things, has consequences we didn't expect. So as a mom who is sending my kids to Jeff, I sent them to Christian school here, and I love this community. I don't want to be told like, well, if you don't like the laws, leave because I don't think that makes the community better. I think diversity and acceptance and working with each other, like even the chicken ordinance, is what makes us a good community. And I love the Midwest, and I want my kids to feel safe here. So as this comes up, I just hope you all would consider supporting it. I know I've made a lot of changes in the past few years, growing up and sending my kids to conservative Christian schools. And, but yeah, just having to rethink how I want to model love and community and support to my children and the people they love. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
Hello, Eli Egbert, 6809 Church Street. Just something very quickly. This isn't the battle I was prepared to fight, but I would just like to, tonight, but I would just like to make a comment that I'm not from Kokomo, I'm from Lafayette, but I would like to just be a voice that says many of your constituents would not be in favor of resolutions in favor of queer health. And so I would just like to be that voice that says for moral and religious reasons, we don't support this. And I know that small city government usually doesn't have many voices on either, on either side. So I would just like to be that voice that says there are constituents which do not agree with this. Thank you.
Other public comment tonight?
Move for adjournment?
Take it.
All in favor say aye.
Well, Pearl, let me have my moment in the sun.